And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unbroken, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I call the 3:00 PM session of the October 27th, 2020 meeting of the Henry County Board of Supervisors to order. I'd like to welcome all visitors, remind you that if you want to address the board, you must sign up seven days in advance of a meeting to be put on the agenda. The county administrator is the contact person for the board. However, the public may address the board under the Agenda Item Matters Presented by the Public later in the meeting this evening. Again, welcome everyone. Our first item of consideration as far as business is Agenda Item Number Five, which are the Items of Consent. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Items of Consent be approved.
Second.
We have a motion, second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero, Jennifer. Agenda Item Number Six, we have the Monthly Report on Delinquent Tax Collection Efforts. We have with us County Treasurer Scott Grinsteph. Welcome.
Good afternoon. This is a report for the tax collections. As of September 30th, 2020, personal property collection rate was 93.56% of the 2019 personal property. During the month of September, we collected $64,775. Real estate collection, as of September 30th, 2020, we collected, our collection rate is 95.04% of the 2019 real estate tax. The amount collected during the month was $93,747. Since the 1st of January, 2020, TACS has collected $793,331. And since the 1st of the year, our debt set off has collected $149,266. And so far, in the month of October, we've collected four DMV stocks.
Does anyone have any questions of Mr. Grinsteph or comments?
Scott, on the real estate, is the 95%, is that historically where we should be?
Yeah, that's actually, I think, above last year's.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm checking the numbers. I actually think both of them are a little bit above, which surprises me for this year that we were doing that way.
So am I. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Agenda Item Number Seven, we have a monthly update from Martinsville Henry County EDC. We have with us Mark. Mark, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Please provide a brief update for October. As you can see, our business development division had a virtual workshop on the 15th of September, tips on putting products on store shelves. You can also see an invitation of a new effort that's organized by Patrick Henry Community College, our Workforce Investment Board, and Ross Works. There are roundtables in several different sectors. The first one was today. These obviously will be done online, but will help business to continue as their needs and particular hiring needs are changing in this new environment that we're in. Page Two, you'll see an effort that our Valerie Harper and our Small Business Division ran. This was EDC's way of helping small business during its COVID time. We granted, there were small business grants. We talked about these in the past, but up to $300. It closed on October 31st. You can see, or the project had to be completed by the 31st. You can see the awards of over $8,800 were awarded, and you can see who they went to and how they were used. And this was a really good program that folks, I think, appreciated, and any support at this particular time is good. Small Business Saturday for this year will be November 28th. Again, we're going to be offering $10 coupons for individuals to go to restaurants that hopefully they haven't been to before and try something new. Fifteen restaurants have signed up for that. We've made contact with six small businesses in last year, or last month, rather, and you can see who those are. In our Marketing Division, talk about it. Well, the unemployment report is out for August, and as you'll see, we dropped a little over two points in the last month. We're now back down to 7.4. It's not where we want to be, but we're certainly going in the right direction. And Henry County has been very fortunate to have a very strong business community, particularly on the manufacturing side throughout this pandemic era that we've been in for the last seven or eight months. We've had three third-party requests for information. We will launch a new version of our website, yesmartinsville.com, in November. They'll be more user-friendly. It will be more targeted to our consultants, and it will also really reposition us as we try to take advantage of the region that we're in, from Roanoke to Danville to Greensboro and all the opportunities that are there for new businesses. We've had a couple of prospect visits. Project Spectrum has been the latest. They will be coming again soon. And I just point that out to let you know that even though most people have been closed down throughout the summer, we have had a number of in-person visits. Companies are still coming to visit in person. There is a pent-up need for getting on with business, and we're happy with that. And our staff has continued to handle those, and we will meet with anybody at any time, obviously. We've, we have worked with a company called Alliance Consulting Engineers to fly drone footage of Kamal Crossing and the Shell Building, new aerial video, which, again, specifically are for clients that we're working with. They are very good at this, and we've done that in the last month. Cost of Living Information for the fourth quarter has been submitted, and we, Spencer Johnson particularly, put together a list of the companies that have looked at Kamal Crossing in the past and are looking currently with respect to gas needs that have helped with this Appalachian Region Commission grant that we got to run the gas line there and finish that. Our Tourism Division had 14 site visits. Those are listed for you there. We had 38 guests into the Visser Center in the last month. We've had 15 requests for information, and the numbers continue to be really great on Dick and Willie. There were 5,883 people there in September that went through our trail counter. Our bi-weekly eBlast continues to go to 16,000 folks. You can see several webinars. That's the way people are communicating now, but on all types of things about rethinking tourism and rethinking communities a destination, and our staff is working daily to try to stay up on the forefront of all of that. We have begun, the Tourism Staff, rather, has begun the planning for 25 days of Christmas promotion. We have two new winter clings going on the Virginia Welcome Centers. That's been finalized, and we're continuing with the Trail Taker's Art Project that's ongoing. There'll be a Shop Local ad in the Showcase Magazine in December. And you can see our Film Division has worked with Natalie Hodges on a couple of her productions. So it's been very good publicity for our community. Sarah Hodges has been active in our Talent Development Division. We have partnered on an application of FLAP grants, a federal lands application grant that would allow us to fund the permitting and the engineering work to complete the 11 and a half miles left so that our Dick and Willie Trail can go all the way from the complex to Philpott, which would give us a tremendous asset to market regionally and nationally. Not a lot of details, but the rumor has it that the big chair could be returning to Uptown soon, so more to come on that as we work on that. There's a ghost science project that, I don't know if you ever noticed, uptown, but there are a lot of sort of historic legacy type of murals on some of the buildings that have faded and gone away. And those are going to be brought back and restored, and our staff is working on pup grants for three uptown improvement projects. All of this we're doing and eagerly doing as assistance to the uptown revitalization, which is very key. Having a strong uptown is key to our recruitment efforts overall. So our staff's been very busy. That's what's been going on last month, and we'll be happy to answer a question.
Anyone have any questions for Mark this time? Thank you. Agenda Item Number Eight is Matters Presented by the Public. I have a brief statement to read in regard to matters presented by the public. This is time for public comment. We welcome your participation in today's meeting. We're here to listen to you. If you care to address the board, come to the podium, state your name, your subject matter, and the district in which you live. By coming to the podium, you have agreed that you will exhibit respect for the board and its members. You will receive the same consideration from the board. Please try to keep your presentation to no more than five minutes. We, under a specific signing and contacting the county administrator's office in the required time, we have Mr. Louis Waller. Mr. Waller is a resident in the Collinsville District, has asked for time on the agenda today to discuss blighted properties in the Villa Heights area, which the board is familiar with, Mr. Waller, along with, we have representation here from the Sheriff's Department, and they're familiar with it as well. Mr. Waller.
Again, I want to say thanks to everyone for giving me this opportunity to be here today. I've been in Villa Heights for 35 years and recently moved to Collinsville, but I still have property there, and I have some major challenges, concerns, not just for myself, but for my neighbors. I had the opportunity this past week, the last two or three weeks, just to walk through the community from house to house to get signatures from petition from our neighbors there. And I got about 180 people didn't finish the walk, but 180 individuals that would be helping me in this petition, whether they're here or not. So this afternoon, they will come with me, hopefully, to help with this endeavor. So I want to talk about the problems that I've seen over the years, major problems. And as I heard a few minutes, redevelopment, revitalization, these are some things that we want to do in our community. I hear everybody say, why go to Villa Heights? It's the hood. Who want to stay there? Who want to be there? Wow, I grew up there, my kids grew up there, my family was there. To have somebody purchase property in a community and yet walk away is not acceptable. So what do we do? We have to bridge the gap. We have to come up with some ideas, some strategies to remove the issues, and it's a major issue. I just sometimes want to cry to see that our community have really went south. When I say south, it's bad. So today, I'm seeking for your guidance, your help, your support in this matter. As I stated, over the last 10 years, myself personally, I've just seen the value of our property decrease. Why? When the value of property should increase? What's the probability of changing? Only we can change things together as a group. I keep saying the same thing. How do we bridge the gap? I want to be able to be the advocate in our community, to be able to say, we can make a difference. Personally, in the last few years, I want to talk about, it became a dumping ground. They brought trash and just threw it on the ground between apartments. I mean, just not trash, just all kind of trash. Just poured it out in the streets, and to me, it was devastating. Then we got to look at the next thing, unsafe for our kids that are on the streets. Even in that environment, over the years, we have seen drugs continue to be there for years and years. Not only drugs, we have seen people get killed there. How can we make a difference? And I keep saying the same thing because we continue to deal with the same problem. We have calls for years trying to say, what can we do? And they're like, well, this person don't live here. He bought your property, have LLC license, okay? Years ago, I had a car that didn't have an inspection sticker on it. Guess what? They wrote me a fine, they say, if you don't clean that car, get it off the street, $500 fine. And now we got apartments that are what I would call trash apartments. If you look at them, they need to be torn down, burnt down for all some concern. And so I represent my community. So not only do I talk about that, but in the concept, I have seen people, again, fighting in the streets over the years. Several years back, even at my own home, murdered there in the community because of drugs. Again, in the last June, another death, young people in the same community. And so I'm here to make a stand, to say, help me. Whatever I need for you guys to help me with, I will do whatever I can. I just need help to take apartments down. So I also, some of the concerns are far away being of our youth. I'm a construction management major. I've been academic for over 35 years, higher education. I teach construction management. I had a young lady that left from Martinsville, moved to Greensboro, and I asked her why. She said, it's nothing in Martinsville. Look at our community. I know smart technology. I said, why can't I be the first one to start smart technology in Villa Heights? Put some new houses, put some new developments. But we need your help today. I'm supporting you, asking for your help. But I hope that we don't be the unforgotten community. Because if you look over Martin Henry County, I haven't seen any communities look like our community. And as I look at the older people, I went to some houses yesterday, and they're disturbed. What does the future hold for Villa Heights? As people move out, empty houses are there. Why? Nobody wants to move in. And I want to say to the board this afternoon, if you can help me, I have a signature of about 180 individuals who are signed in this endeavor. I know, as you already stated, you all know what the problem is, but why can't we fix the problem? We're leaders. We are advocates in our community. So we want to make a change. And I'm here, like I said, again, to do whatever is necessary to help in this community. I want our community to be better, just not Villa Heights. My goal, I was in the school system for 23 years retired, but I went back. But my goal is, in the next three and a half years to retire, I want to make an impact here in our city. So I want to start with Villa Heights. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Agenda Number Nine, we have an update on the Henry County Fair from Roger Adams, our Parks and Rec Director. Roger?
Thank you, Captain. We've been working diligently for the last several months preparing for the Henry County Fair, and I want to update you guys on several different things. The fair dates have been set for September 22nd through the 25th, 2021, the Martinsville Speedway. Martinsville Speedway has been great to work with. Their staff has been great to work with. We're both looking forward to hosting the fair in conjunction with the race they'll be having that weekend. And we have a great committee. We've developed about a 12 to 15-person committee that's actively working on this. Mr. Bryant, Mr. Hall serve on the committee, along with some other people in the, in the community. We have, the website and the Facebook page is up and running, and we have already about 1,200 people that are following us on Facebook on the fair page. And planners are moving along rapidly for developing the, literally hundreds of items that are needed to be done for the fair. We are hoping to secure the Midway vendor today, and the Midway vendor that has agreed to come would provide the rides, the games, and the food attractions. We're also looking at signing a variety of ground attractions for the fair. Those could include magic shows, acrobatic dog shows, racing pigs, a timber show, and some other attractions. We're actively working on that now. Some other attractions we're looking at having is a petting zoo, fireworks on the last night of the fair. We have secured and registered to have a Miss Henry County Fair pageant, and the pageant actually takes place before the fair. I didn't realize that until I started working on it. But the fair pageants, the pageant will actually take place earlier in the year, next year, and the winner will represent the county at the fair, and she can also represent the county at various ribbon cuttings and things in the community. And she'll be able to go to the Virginia Association of Fairers Conference in 2022 and represent the county competing for the state title. So we're excited about that. We have a lady that has ran the pageant for other county fairs nearby that has volunteered to be the pageant director. The 4-H department has come on board to offer a variety of traditional 4-H attractions at the fair. We're looking at having music each night of the fair and having a variety of musical acts. We are actively looking for sponsors. We'll be putting the sponsor application online shortly. So we have a variety of sponsor packets, from a title sponsor all the way down to sponsoring area attractions. So there's sponsorship packets for all budgets for businesses of all sizes. We, our fair committee decided they would like to pursue having a mascot, so I'm working on that to give them some, some recommendations for a type of mascot that we could use to help promote the fair. And then we have a list of a variety of different things we'll need for the fair that I'm working on, things such as developing a fair poster, securing billboard advertising, a program for the fair, radio and TV ads. I'm working with a vendor now, so we'll be able to do online ticket sales, to sell wristbands and ride tickets ahead of time, shirts for the fair, various items that we need at the fair, and a lot of different operational stuff that our staff will be working on to make the event a success. So we're, I'm pleased that we've made a lot of progress, and we're looking forward to having, having a great fair. Hopefully, the weather will be good, and we've kind of set 10,000 people as our minimum goal to have at the four-day fair.
If anyone have any questions at this time?
I think it's great. I really do, and I do appreciate your hard work because it's so, see how eager you are to see that it gets here too. I think me and Roger, Sarah's kind of a sense of commodity when it comes to this fair. I think me and him both wanted one for a long, long time, but it hasn't ever come to fruition. But now it's, now it's reality, and it's going to be here next year. So gives a little time to work on it. I can say one thing, thank God that it wasn't this year. That we had enough common sense to put it off to next year to get our stuff in order. And he's working real hard and diligent on this, and I honestly think it's going to be a great, great comeback for Henry County when we do this first, I won't say the first fair, but the first fair in a long, long time. Things can be great.
Thank you. Agenda Item 10 will take up financial matters and kind of continuing with where we've just left off with Agenda Item Nine. 10A is an award of contract referencing the rides, games, and concessions vendor for the county fair for the Parks and Rec Department. Mr. Hall?
Roger Adams, our Director of Parks and Recreation is asking the board to award a vendor contract for rides, games, and concessions for the 2021 County Fair to Cole Show's Amusement Company Incorporated from Covington, Virginia. Mr. Adams is with us and will provide additional information at the meeting. And should the board decide to act on this, we ask that they take action to award that contract and also authorize the county administrator or his designee to sign the appropriate documents.
What is the pleasure of the board in regard of awarding the contract?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approving the awarded contracts or present for rides, games, and commissions to the 2021 County Fair to Cole Show's Amusement Company Incorporated and authorize the county administrator or his designee to sign the appropriate documents.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just a question. What's the typical split with an amusement company like this between the locality and the company?
Typically, it's 25%. So we don't actually pay them any money. They come and set up and sell the ride wristbands, and then we get 25% of the gross sales. And then we also get a set dollar amount for every vendor, like game and food vendor that they bring.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero, Jennifer. 10B, award of contract referencing inmate commissary services for the sheriff's office. Mr. Hall?
Staff from the sheriff's office and purchasing department have completed the request for proposal process for the inmate commissary services at the new adult detention center. Sheriff Lane Perry is asking the board to award a contract for these services to Oasis Commissary Services headquartered in Cumming, Georgia, with operations in Salem, Virginia. Contract is a five-year agreement with three one-year extensions available. The agreement will start when the first inmate is moved into the new facility. By awarding the contract prior to opening the facility, the vendor is able to work closely with the contractor to plan, schedule, and complete installation of the many components before the center opens. And the new facility is anticipated to open in February of 2022. Sheriff Perry is not with us today, but Lieutenant Colonel Eames is here, should you have any questions?
In regard to the awarding of this contract, what is the board's pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we award five-year contract for inmate commissary services at the new adult detention center to Oasis Commissary Services.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero, Jennifer. 10C, award of contract referencing inmate communication services for the sheriff's office. Mr. Hall?
Staff from the sheriff's office and the purchasing department have completed the RFP process for inmate communication services at the new adult detention center. Services will include inmate telephone, video visitation, inmate tablets, and inmate mail handling. Sheriff Perry is asking the board to award a contract for these services to Paycell Communications in Greensboro in North Carolina. The contract is a five-year agreement with three one-year extensions available. The agreement will start when the first inmate is moved into the new facility. By awarding the contract prior to opening the facility, the vendor is able to work closely with the contractor to plan, schedule, and complete installation of the components. And again, the adult detention facility is anticipated to open in February 2022. And once again, Lieutenant Colonel Eames is here, should you have any questions?
In awarding this contract, what is the board's consideration?
Mr. Chairman, I move the board to award the five-year contract for inmate communication services at the new adult detention center to Paycell Communications.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero, Jennifer. 10D, an additional appropriation referencing DMV traffic enforcement grants for the sheriff's office. Mr. Hall?
Sheriff Perry is asking the board to appropriate funds from three separate grants from the Virginia Department of Motor Vehicles. The grants are pass-through funds received from the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration for FY21. The sheriff's office has been awarded the following grants. First, $26,000 for the enforcement of alcohol-related traffic laws. Second, $2,550 for the enforcement of occupant protection, otherwise known as seatbelt laws. And grant number three, $25,916 for the enforcement of speed-related traffic laws. The grants will be used for training, equipment, and overtime compensation related to the enforcement of these laws, and additional details are provided in your background packet. And once again, Lieutenant Colonel Eames is here, should you have any questions?
In reference to this additional appropriation, what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board appropriate the DMV grants of $26,000, $2,550, and $25,916 as outlined.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero, Jennifer. 10E, an additional appropriation referencing emergency education relief funds for the public school. Mr. Hall?
School board is asking the board of supervisors to approve an additional appropriation of $269,393 received from the elementary and secondary school emergency relief fund and the governor's emergency education relief fund. The funds are to be used to address the impact that COVID-19 continues to have on our schools. The school board has indicated it will use the funds to support special education services and purchase sanitizing supplies and personal protective equipment. Our superintendent, Ms. Strayer, and members of her cabinet are here to address any questions you may have.
In reference to this additional appropriation, what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move the board to approve the additional appropriation of $269,393 as outlined above.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero, Jennifer. 10F, an additional appropriation referencing federal coronavirus relief funds for public schools. Mr. Hall?
Superintendent Sandy Strayer asks the board to appropriate $1,220,590 received from the federal coronavirus relief funds. The CRF awards are intended for costs incurred during, related to COVID-19 in reopening and operating public schools during the first months of the 2021 school year. In accordance with the U.S. Treasury guidance, funds must be expended by December 30th, 2020. As Strayer has indicated, the funds will be used to provide additional pay in the form of a one-time stipend for current employees employed under an employment contract or appointment letter, performing jobs in person at the school building level. Funds will also be used to make improvements to HVAC systems at school facilities. This appropriation is contingent upon the school board approving it at its next meeting. And again, Ms. Strayer and her group are here, should you have any questions?
In regard to this additional appropriation, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'm Ed Krumm, and I recommend approval of appropriating $1,220,590 received from the federal coronavirus relief fund for the purpose indicated above, contingent upon the school board also approving the appropriation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Ms. Strayer, does this indicate... Ms. Strayer, does this indicate all employees at the building level? Not just teachers?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. Yes, as Mr. Hall said, this would be a one-time stipend from the CRF funds that would be used to pay for the people who are performing those in-person duties as well as virtual duties, going above and beyond, including our cafeteria workers, our bus drivers, and all of the people who have went above and beyond. We also, like this body, we want to approve with local funds to provide a one-time stipend for people who don't fall in that category, but have also worked very hard on the reopening of schools.
Thank you. That's, I want to be sure bus drivers, cafeterias were covered.
Instructional support, care professionals. Yes, sir.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? It is six zero, Jennifer. 10G, an award of contract referencing a detection scanner for the sheriff's office. Mr. Hall?
Sheriff Perry is asking the Board to award a contract in the amount of $169,000 for the purchase of an Intercept Contraband Detection Scanner. To award that contract to Tech 84 Incorporated. The price includes the scanner, temperature scanner, installation, and training. The equipment will be used to improve officer and inmate safety at the jail and lessen the chance of an officer being exposed to the coronavirus. Pricing is based on a competitive bid through Prince William County, Virginia, and CARES Act funds will be used for this purchase.
In awarding of this contract, what's the pleasure of the Board?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we award the contract to Tech 84 Incorporated in the amount of $169,000 for the detection scanner as outlined above.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six zero, Jennifer. Agenda item number 11, designation of voting representative for the 2020 VACO Annual Meeting. Mr. Hall?
The 2020 VACO Annual Meeting will be held virtually on November 9 through 11, 2020. Each county is asked to designate a member of its elected board and an alternate to vote on the county's behalf on any issues that may arise. I believe, Jennifer, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm the only one that's registered for this so far. There's still time if anybody wants to register. At this point, I'm the only one.
And in keeping with that, we can designate you as a voting?
Yes.
Representative, okay. With that, what's the pleasure of the Board?
Well, Mr. Chairman, if no other Board members are going to be in attendance, I move that we have Tim Hall, the County Administrator, serve as our voting representative.
Second. A motion, second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six zero, Jennifer. Agenda item number 12, consideration of 2021 legislative agenda for the Virginia General Assembly. Mr. Hall?
Each year, staff and the Board of Supervisors construct a legislative agenda of items we would like for the General Assembly to consider. It is up to the Board of Supervisors to approve the final list for submission to our General Assembly delegate. In the past, we have sent the legislative agenda via email to our state representatives or have presented it in person during a roundtable discussion of these issues. I would imagine that given our current circumstances, it would be best to distribute that via email. You have a draft agenda in your packet. I will, I will tell you that we anticipate a second agenda, legislative agenda, based specifically on reversion issues as well as composite index issues with schools, that sort of thing. That is not done yet, but we will anticipate getting that to you and getting to the representatives as soon as we can. I would anticipate, if it's all right with the Board, that you approve the one in front of you and also authorize staff to pass on the extra agenda as we finalize it and get it to our representative.
Okay. With that, first, thanks staff for compiling this, and I realize some things are carryover, some things are new, and as you just mentioned, some things ongoing and still need some final touches, but thank you all for, for doing it. The Board's had an opportunity to review this. What is the pleasure of the Board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a recommendation we approve the 2021 legislative agenda that will be forwarded to our Representatives in Virginia General Assembly.
Do we need to include the addition?
Yeah, it'd be nice to have that, and authorize us to also distribute the next one that we're working on.
So move.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second with the noted addition. Any discussion or questions? All in favor? It is six zero, Jennifer. Agenda item 13 will have informational items. We will begin by taking comments from the Board if there are any, beginning with Mr. Zaire.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Morton.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bryant.
Yes, sir. Last month, I talked to you about the Phila Collinsville Rescue Squad, about the needs for an ambulance. We talked about getting the funds for the ambulance, and of course, we had voted prior in the year about a six-month window before we would actually start looking into funding some of these non, per se, non-essential things to the county, but I want to bring up the need that FC is in pretty, pretty bad shape right now on ambulances. We've got three of them, and two of them is about give out, and we are in dire need of another ambulance. So having said that, I'm going to make a motion here in just a little bit that we allocate the funds for that ambulance, but we won't need that funds until June, July, or August. However, we need to extend it or to have it. It's not needed right now, but part of the grant, to get the grant, is to so that we have the other half of the fund is available to us. We can't do that without having some kind of other means of the finance for it. So, I mean, whenever we, we as a county decide that we want to, if we vote for this, when we want to pay it out, is fine, but that'll be past our six-month window that we had talked about earlier, last month about it. I talked to Dale also about it here, and what I want to do now is to just make a motion that we approve fundings to Phila Collinsville Volunteer Rescue Squad for $100,000 to go towards the purchase of a new ambulance. And of course, now the time of pay would be determined basically by the county of when, as long as we get it by the end of August would be fine, but if it falls in our, this year's budget, per se, next year's budget, I would prefer that it would come out of this year's budget and come out of the fund balance or general fund.
We have a motion, is there a second before we continue with discussion?
I'll second that now, but I need to ask a question.
Yes.
How does that affect our, Phila Collinsville's up for there, they're the next one in line, right?
Yes.
So they're the next one in line.
Well, they're, they're not really, there's not really any lineup in it anymore, is it, it's kind of a need-to-know basis, need-on-basis, I think, isn't it?
There have been folks that technically were next up that chose not to take it, so that whole process is kind of.
But FC applied for it last year before the coronavirus hit, and at that timeframe, we were sued in to receive the funds. Of course, we know what happened when the virus stopped. That, that put a hold on just about everything, you know, so I, we all understand, even, even at the Rescue Squad, they all understand, you know, why we didn't receive it, you know. There's nobody bitter about it, not receiving it. They understand why we didn't receive it, but they do need to have a, an agreement with the county per se that we will receive the funds. It's a 50-50 fund per se is the, the.
A match.
The 50-50 match from the grant. So, I think the ambulance is about $260,000, $270,000, something like that, so.
So $100,000 wouldn't be a 50-50 match?
Well, whatever, whatever it's going to work out to be.
Well, you made a motion for $100,000.
No, I know, I know, but, yeah, I mean, we can't make it for any more than $100,000. So I think that's all the county is going to give us.
In the budget discussion way back when, I think we had $88,000 in the budget.
Right.
To provide that funding.
Right.
That was the original amount.
That's correct. And then when we redid the budget, we pretty much put a halt on any capital expenditures until we get to, I suggest six months, which would be the end of the calendar year, and then we can start to perhaps crawl out of the bunker a little bit at that point.
So, Mr. Bryant, is there any, if we waited until the end of the calendar year to make an appropriation, does that hurt or help?
Well, what it is, is the, the grant's going to expire. We would just have to.
When does the grant expire? Maybe I wasn't listening.
I didn't tell you when the grant was going to expire.
Okay.
But the grant's going to expire before the end of the year.
Oh, before this, okay, before December 30.
Yeah, I mean, which may not be a big problem, but we would just have to reapply again for it. I don't think it's going to be a major concern, the way the COVID-19 has put a stress on everybody, I think would be understanding if, if we did do it, but, you know, I, I would like to tie matters up and say that we've got this taken care of, and that's one thing we don't have to worry about going forward. Like I said, FC is, they've got the three units now, two of them stay in the shop more than they do on the road. We do have a paid staff now, so with the paid staff, they run continuously, you know, and during, during the weekdays.
Don't you still have some volunteers?
Yeah, 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 and, and we, we get decent runs from the volunteers, absolutely. Volunteers run fairly decent, but having said that, the ambulances are used, I think FC gets more calls than any other squad in the county bar nine, and, you know, they, they just, they need vehicles to run, you know?
So with the grant components, does it say specifically, this is for 50% of the cost of a new ambulance?
It, no, I think it's, they're matching the, the funds from what I understand is what the county is going to give us, and it.
Which may not be equal to the cost of the.
But they have to take the rest of it out of their budget.
Right.
Okay, that's what I was missing.
Right.
Okay, so if we gave $100,000, the grant's $100, and it's $201,000.
I'm not, I'm not 100% sure exactly what it is, but it's based on the, the county's ambulance, it's a Dodge, based on what the county's got. Dale, if you can give me just a general idea of what the county ambulance is running.
The Board's grants based on the state contract price for ambulance, which is typically the last of what it actually costs for an ambulance. I don't recall the exact number, but I'm, I'm thinking that the grant to Phila Collinsville was approximately $125,000, assuming the ambulance costs $250,000. So if you add that, that's $225,000. Phila Collinsville would have to come up with about $35,000, $40,000 of their home money in addition to the $100,000 if the county chose to give that to them.
And, and also, of course, we, we have most of the stuff, you know, off the old ambulance is to put on to the new ambulance to where you wouldn't have that much of a cost to try to get it up and running, but there are some new things that we'd have to put on ambulance, but most of the, the stock of the ambulance is expensive. If you have to stock it from ground, well, we have most of that stuff now that we pull off both the ambulances that we have, and, you know, that would make it more cost-efficient to us, but he's, he's, you're right, Dale. Yeah, it's, I think it's $125,000 that comes from the grant, and if, if we could squeeze the $100,000 if, out of the county, then it would leave us $30,000, $40,000 that would have to come out of the funds of the ambulance, I mean, of FC.
Is there a staff recommendation?
I think our recommendation was that we wait six months, but certainly, we're willing to do whatever the Board wants. I don't think there's any question that there's a need.
Right.
I think there's absolutely a need.
Have you got a transferable box, or you got to have the whole?
It's the whole unit. We're going to Dodge, Dodge frame, and the boxes, we're not going to get a new box.
Wouldn't fit.
Well, if I heard you correctly, it may not be outpaid until we're actually into another budget year.
Right.
Possibly July 1 of 2021.
Right. And that's why, that's why I would hope that we could get it paid the end of June out of this year's budget, because additionally, additionally, it was in the budget, you know, until the coronavirus hit, and then that scrapped just everything, you know, so we tentatively had it in the budget for it.
So we're basically four months into, that's six months that you were talking about waiting to see. Things moving along fairly well.
I think numbers have been better than we anticipated. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay, have we had enough discussion or any questions?
We will probably need direction if it's approved. We'll need direction as to where to take that one. You have two choices, you can take part of it out of your contingency, I'm not sure what is in there off the top of my head, or you can take it out of fund balance, or you can do a combination thereof.
Could you repeat the motion, because I want to be sure that.
Okay. I want to make a motion, and now this is, you know, the $100,000 is something that we looked at, at the Rescue Squad. I wasn't 100% sure exactly what the allocations was from the county. Ms. Toll said it was $88,000. Anything that we, anything that we can neglect from having to pay from the county, from the Rescue Squad on it would help us out. In other words, you know, $30,000 to $40,000 out of the Rescue Squad these days, sometimes it's tough, you know, regardless, and plus, we're a volunteer organization. So what I was making a motion for was $100,000 for a motion to go towards Phila Collinsville Volunteer Rescue Squad for the purpose of a new ambulance.
Would you accept a friendly amendment? With the balance, any leftover balance of the cost of the ambulance comes out of the Rescue Squad funds, which basically says.
Well, that would have to be that one anyway.
Right, but, but just making that, the grant's going to do half, we're going to do half, and anything over $200,000.
Yeah, I'm not sure what, what you would say half would be, but I'm just asking the, the county for $100,000 for the Rescue Squad.
Anything over $200,000, right?
Excuse me?
Anything over 200, because the grant's going to give you 100, we're going to give you 100.
Well, the grant, I think, is 125, I think it's.
The grant's probably 125.
Oh, I misunderstood, I'm sorry.
Also, the ambulance is approximately $250,000.
Got it, got it, okay.
I will clarify, looking, you know, you have $100,000 in your contingency reserve, and of course, you can tap some of that, all of that, and wipe it out, or you can do a combination thereof with the fund balance, or you can do all fund balance.
For not to tap into our contingency.
I'm, I'm.
What do you think? I think it's just too early.
I'm in this doing it in the fund balance.
Okay. Please restate the motion to the amount and the source.
Okay.
So that we all fully understand and for the record.
All right. I would like to make a motion that we would approve a grant for $100,000 to go towards Phila Collinsville Volunteer Rescue Squad to purchase a new ambulance, and the money come from the general fund balance.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Another question. Tim?
Yes, ma'am.
Coming from the fund balance, is it going to make any difference between $88,000 and $100,000? You already had budgeted.
Yeah, with the fund balance, that's a relatively.
Small amount.
Minuscule amount, yes, ma'am.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There is. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further questions or discussion? Okay, all in favor? That's what can. Six zero, Jennifer. Any other comments? Mr. Bryant?
No, sir.
Any other comments?
Oh, I thought you said Mr. Martin, I'm sorry. No, sir.
Ms. McKenna.
I have a question. I think most of you are aware of the continued accident problem, some resulting in death there at the intersection of Highway 58 and Preston Road, and I put a collision diagram map from VDOT at your desk, so you'll know exactly where I'm talking about. But I've talked to Lisa Hughes on several occasions regarding what could be done there, and I know that there are several considerations that are being discussed. She's told me that they are prioritizing this location for the highway safety and improvement funds, and so I would like to request that the Board of Supervisors endorse utilizing those safety improvement funds and send a letter to VDOT emphasizing the importance of moving forward with this project.
Second.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I mean, in form of a motion.
Okay, and there was a second?
Yes, sir.
And I apologize with these on, I can't always pick up on, I was actually looking at the diagram at the time, and I apologize. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
May I ask just a clarification? You want staff to send that letter on the Board's behalf?
Yes, please.
Is there any other questions or clarification needed? All in favor? It's six zero, Jennifer. Any other comments, Ms. Buchanan?
No, sir.
Mr. Slaughter?
I do have one more, Jim. And maybe you'll mention it about the Veterans Day program.
Yeah, I've got that in mind.
Okay, I have none. Mr. Hall?
Yes, sir, a couple items, and we'll start with that one. The Veterans Day ceremony to honor the local Veteran of the Year is scheduled for November the 11th at 5:00 PM. And I refer to it as the Old Bassett High School. At a loss for what the actual name is of it now, but we all know where that is. So that event will be held on the 11th.
Have they, have they opened back up?
They don't, they're opening for this event, yeah.
Oh, okay.
We can just do it outside, it's nice, you know?
I just knew there were claims to say.
Yeah. County has that day off as a holiday. As you know, we're based on the state holiday schedule, so we will be off that day. We are also off on Election Day, that is a new holiday that the governor instituted during the spring and then to the special session. So actually, all of our facilities will be closed on November the 3rd. Clearly, this building will still be open for the registrar's office to do its duties that day, but employees will have that day off. And a reminder, we've had a file of early voting here in the building. It's been very, very well received, and a lot of folks who've taken advantage of that. And the deadline to early vote is this Saturday, October 31st. So if you have anyone that has that question, they have until Saturday at 5 o'clock to come in and vote. Mr. Heath mentioned the ARC grant, the Appalachian Regional Commission grant that we got for Commonwealth Crossing. I just want to elaborate on that a little bit. We have been working with our local partners, Harvest Foundation, EDC, the ARC folks to solicit part of the funding that will be required to extend natural gas to Commonwealth Crossing. Natural gas is the only utility that is not available there right now. Press glass is in place, they use a little bit of propane, but they do not use natural gas for their process. They use electricity, which is why it was so important for us to work to get that substation down there. Well, with the natural gas, this is an equal issue for any company that needs natural gas. So the whole project to extend natural gas to that park is gonna cost about $7.5 million. This ARC grant is for 1.5 million, and we're working with our local partners and regional partners to get the rest of that funding. But I think this is very important for a couple of reasons. One, if we extend natural gas to Commonwealth Crossing, we become, there are fewer than 10 sites in the Commonwealth that have more than 100 acres publicly owned with all utilities. We would enter that rarefied air, if you will. So that's important for us. It also helps establish us with the Appalachian Regional Commission. When we started this process, I was somewhat skeptical that we would get a day in court, if you will. But not only did we get a day in court, they were open to our solicitation and to encouraging us to continue to use them. So someone up in the, up in the chain of the ARC thought this was a viable project, and we're hopeful that we can go back for subsequent projects, which gives us just another pot that we can attempt to tap for economic development, so that's a good thing. You probably saw this based on the city council meeting a couple of weeks ago, the housing study that was commissioned through a cooperative effort of the city, county, Harvest, and EDC. Leon Torniski made a presentation of the housing study in the city. I didn't feel like we needed to show you the same thing, but I will tell you that we have it available if you want to see it. It's a voluminous report, but it essentially tells us what we already know, that we don't have enough housing. We don't have enough housing for workforce development, we don't have enough housing in the, in the kind of the sweet spot of 100 to 200,000. We don't have enough apartments, and that's one reason I'm so excited about the John Red Smith project. And there's some other information that will come with regard to converting buildings into apartments here soon. Some action that was taken this week that we're excited about. We're not a party to it, so I won't make the announcement for the parties, but there was more activity with regard to rehabbing facilities into apartments. So we have that housing study available. If you wish to see it, we can certainly get that too. And finally, this is race weekend, somewhat scaled down from what we're used to, but every visitor that comes is an important visitor. And we need to remind our folks in the service industry and the folks who encounter people who are here for the race that every impression is important, and we need to make a good impression on the folks that are in. And I will remind you that there's a night race Friday, there's a night race Saturday, and the Sunday race will start mid-afternoon. But of course, we moved the clocks back this Sunday, so that race will finish at night. And just to top it all off for you, Saturday is Halloween, it's also the full moon, and it's also when we turn the clocks back. So if you have nowhere to go, you may want to stay home, but we're hopeful that if you do get out and join us at the race, that we'll all treat our visitors well and give them a good impression of ours in Henry County.
Saying about the weather, you probably want to stay home anyway.
Well, I think Thursday's gonna be pretty bad, but I think it's gonna get chilly, but I think as far as getting to races, then I think we'll be good.
Anything else under informational light? I'll back up and with my time, make an offer to Superintendent Strayer if you want any time. If, if there's anything...
No, no, I never pass up an opportunity to talk, so, sorry, everyone. And I have to say, what I say at our board meetings all the time is how proud I am to be a member of the Henry County Schools family, because we have, our faculty is working very hard, all the staff. Thank you so much for approving our request for the appropriation. Truly, people, I think, really see how important that our educators are, and that's everyone, as Dr. Martin says. You know, we talked in this room last week to our cafeteria, some of our cafeteria staff and our bus drivers and secretarial staff and parapros, and we cannot make it without them. But we also know that our teachers are doing double duty right now with virtual instruction and in-person instruction, and it is hard. But I'm hearing every day about phenomenal things that our kids are doing, and, you know, sometimes it takes a major crisis to do things a different way, and that's what's happening in our school system. So I'm really, really proud of our people. But, you know, we also, I'm sure you've heard that we've had a staff member that we, that lost a life today, and we are devastated by that and heartbroken, and just right now, our thoughts and prayers are with that family.
Thank you.
If you have any questions?
Thank you for your leadership.
Yeah, we said today, our kids need this. We have so many, we've talked about broadband in this room so many times. And we have students who can successfully learn at home because they have a great family structure, they have the internet. But we have a lot of our community members who still do not have access to the internet. Some that do are using a phone, the parent, if they're at work, that doesn't, that's not working for that child. So we, you know, we just know that this is what our kids, that our kids need, some of our kids need this. So we're doing, like I said, we always put kids first, and I'm proud of the people that are working every day. So thank y'all for your support.
Thank you.
With that, I'll entertain a motion for agenda item 14 to go into closed meeting if someone would cite those articles.
Mr. Chairman, with the board convening closed meeting is permitted under the following sections of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, 2.23711A1, for discussion of appointees to the Anchor Commission, Ninth District Development Financing Incorporated and West Pima Planning District Commission, 2.23711A7, for discussion of pending legal matters, 2.23711A3, for discussion of acquisition disposal of real estate, 2.23711A5, for discussion of as yet unannounced industries, 2.23711A10, for discussion of special awards.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor? Anybody have a closed meeting on a motion by Ms. Buchanan, second by, I think, Dr. Martin?
Mr. Hall?
He's wanted to make a motion to come out of close.
I did.
Okay.
Sorry.
Maybe I had it in reverse.
Joe was distracting me again.
Do you certify that in closed session, you discussed only public business matters, lawfully cited in the motion to enter closed session? Mr. Zaire?
Yes, sir.
Dr. Martin?
Yes, sir.
Bryant?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Buchanan?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Mr. Zaire, I believe that you have an appointment of an unexpired term for the board's consideration.
Yes, sir. I move that the board appoint Jeanette Hurd to the Anchor Commission to fulfill an unexpired term of Cynthia Anderson, expiring December 31st, 2020.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's six zero, Jennifer. Mr. Hall, are there any other items that we need to consider prior to our evening session?
Yes, sir.
Board members, do you have any? If not, we'll stand in recess to rejoin the meeting at 6:00 later in tonight's meeting. Again, welcome, everyone. Thank you for coming out and participating in your county government. Our first agenda item tonight is general highway matters. We have Lisa Hughes from VDOT. Lisa, welcome.
Thank you. I'll be pretty brief. As David told you last time, we're just finishing up our, most of our summertime things. You know, we've still got a lot of mowing to do, we're still patching when the weather's good. We've got several pipes yet to put in, and I think I've talked to y'all about those. One thing, tomorrow's, beginning tomorrow, 57A, we're gonna close it to put in the pipe there at Stanley Town Healthcare. Now, I know Thursday is gonna be a washout, but we've got it closed through Saturday. Hopefully, we can, can get it done in that time and get that fixed up. So that section of 57A, from TB Stanley down to the high school, will be closed beginning tomorrow. Let's see, I think David, last time, we discussed on Preston Road, the intersection of Preston Road and 58, briefly. And we're still working on some concepts for improvements, some safety improvements there, and I'll certainly share those with you. They range from, we've talked about flashers to overhead flashers, to maybe changing some of the intersection configurations. So we've discussed a lot, once we land on a place that we'd like to pursue, then I'll be beginning with, with you all in the board as well. That's all I have.
Does anyone else have anything? Okay, thank you. Agenda item 16, we'll have a public hearing on a rezoning application, R-20-07, for Henry County slash John Red Smith School. We have with us our Director of Planning and Zoning, Mr. Lee Clark. Mr. Clark?
Good evening. Property is located at 40 School Drive in the Collinsville District, tax number is 29752A. The applicant's request on the rezoning were approximately 5.6 acres from government special use district to suburban residential district. County staff is working with a developer who plans to convert the building into 32 to 33 apartment units. Once rezoned and approved, special use permit is also required, and that hearing before the Board of Zoning Appeals is scheduled for tomorrow at 1:00 PM. Filing a public hearing, both the planning commission and staff recommended that this rezoning request be approved.
I'll do something just a tad unusual prior to opening a public hearing. I'm gonna ask Mr. Hall if he has any additional edification of this project for the board.
No, sir. I mean, we've, you know, you heard from Mr. Churney last month, the developer that we're working with. He's very excited about this project. We think it'll do a lot for the community, it'll do a lot for the enhancement of the Virginia Avenue Corridor. It will do a lot for putting people in adequate housing so that they can live an adequate life. And we certainly have a dearth of adequate housing units for the working force, working class, and I think this will help address some of that. And I do know Mr. Churney is looking at other opportunities within the county, with dealing with private landowners and private building owners to enhance what he's gonna do at John Red and do it somewhere else. So I think this is a win-win for all of all.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to open the public hearing to take input on this at 6:04 PM. Is there anyone wishing to address the board during this public hearing on this rezoning application? Anyone at all? Seeing no hands, I will close the public hearing at 6:04 PM. Mr. Bryant, this is in your district?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I'd make a recommendation that we approve the rezoning request.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six zero, Jennifer.
Mr. Adams, can I ask Mr. Hall a question, please? When, when is this supposed to be started and completed? Do you know?
Well, there are a lot of moving parts to this. We're pursuing, the county's pursuing a ground field grant to assist us with asbestos mitigation. As you know, any school of that age is gonna have asbestos within it.
Sure.
That grant money that we're attempting to secure is tied up in the state budget, which has not been approved or released yet. Once it is released, we're working with Draper Aiden Associates to help us with that application. We're hopeful that that will be done, the money will be released, and we'll have some word at our application by the first of the, of 2021, first quarter of 2021. I know Mr. Churney's working parallel to that to get some other things lined up. I hate to put a date on it, but I'm hopeful that within the first half of 2021, there'll be some activity in that building.
Okay, that's, because I'm, I'm got, people's gonna ask me the questions, and I'm just gonna give them, you know, just...
Sure.
But I'm, I understand. Yes, sir.
Right, thank you.
Okay, that takes us to agenda item 17, matters presented by the public. How many wish to address the board under matters presented by the public tonight? Cassie, one hand. And thank you, I need to read a brief policy statement of the board. This is time for public comment. We welcome your participation in tonight's meeting. We're here to listen to you. If you care to address the board, come to the podium, state your name, your subject matter, and the district in which you live. By coming to the podium, you've agreed that you'll exhibit respect for the board and its members. You will receive the same level of consideration from the board. And my understanding, as a result, or as a part of, we had Mr. Louis Waller speak this afternoon that perhaps that may be the subject at hand tonight. Is that correct?
Not for the one speaker.
Not for the one speaker, okay. Ma'am, I saw your hand first, if you, if you'd like to come.
Thank you for your time. My name is Susan Rose, and the, the topic that I wish to address is the preventive measures for unsafe firearms, dispersments, and contributing noise that accompanies it in residential, commercial areas in order to keep our neighborhoods safe. I live in Metta Brook Lane, and that, I believe, is in the Irishburg District. And it's right off of 58 going towards Danville. I'm not sure exactly how long the road I live on is. I think it's less than a mile. But we have 25 homes in there, which the bottom of that, that outlet dead ends. And behind that is another road, which has quite a few homes back up to Metta Brook Lane, which is Birch Drive. My concern is the shooting that we have going on that is being allowed. I appreciate the input from Mr. Martin and from Mr. Perry. But it's, under my understanding, that the ordinances allow people to shoot in their backyards. And it's very dangerous. We have quite a few children on our street. And not only, if you're coming into Metta Brook Lane, if you're to your left, we have commercial businesses that are 58 Market, we have Newman's Lawn Mower, and we also have Stanley Furniture Warehouse, which covers a vast area back behind my house, and in particular, the house that seems to be doing most of the shooting. But this is not targeting one house. If you are familiar with that area, we're like sardines in there. And then on the right of Metta Brook, you have Angler's Choice, and you have a car wash, and then there's another business, but I'm not sure. But anyway, we're getting into deer season and squirrel season, and, you know, these people are shooting. And those high-powered guns go a long way. There was once upon a time, I've been back here in Martinsville for 15 years, and I live with my mother at this address. The children used to climb over the fence where the Stanley Town Warehouse is and go to the store. So, you know, there's children all back in those woods, and we have Leatherwood Creek down at the bottom, and they love to go down there. So this is a very serious concern of mine, and I'm not getting, with the ordinances... So this is a very serious concern of mine, and I'm not getting, with the ordinances that are in place, it seems like maybe, you know, maybe these were put in place when we were not so crowded in there. But I'm asking you to try to find a solution to this. I'm coming up, you know, with hitting a brick wall, most everything that I've heard. So anything that you can do, we would appreciate. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the board tonight? Anyone else wishing to address the board under matters presented by the public? Okay, seeing no hands, Mr. Hall, do you have any other items of business for the board?
No, sir.
Board members, do you have any other items of business?
Just one quick thing, Mr. Chairman Adams. For those that may be coming in for the Villa Heights, we are working on that. I just want you to know that we have put this basically on the top burner. This is, is something that has been, I've been working with since I've been in office, is trying to get this taken care of. It's not an easy thing sometime when you have problems like this and trying to get it taken care of. Trust me. I was telling them, I kinda inherited this problem when I took office, because nobody in my predecessors has addressed it or has did anything about it. And I have worked real hard to try to get it taken care of. And so we are, we are advancing forward now on it, and hopefully, we can get this taken care of, you know, in the near future. I just want you to know that we're not setting idle on it right now, that we are working on it.
All right, thank you. Other board members, anything else?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to thank the speaker tonight for coming forward. We have talked on several occasions. I have talked with the sheriff. He was made of, I made a call to the speaker, and I've talked with Mr. Lyle. So I want you to know, we're still looking. We're still working. And certainly, I will get back with you.
Thank you. With that, I'll accept a motion for adjournment.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Six zero, Jennifer. Everyone, have a good evening.